Fifteenth. First item is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado? Rosado? Beck?
Here.
Knapp?
Here.
Kansas?
Here.
Soffa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Yor? Yor?
He's muted.
Mark, you're muted.
Probably walked away to the bathroom or something.
Here.
There he is.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger? Vogelsinger?
She was here for the last meeting.
Yeah. She's not on.
Not on yet.
Yeah, it's, uh, camera's off, so same for her.
There she is, yeah.
Does she hear that?
We'll say yes.
Thirteen out of fourteen.
Okay. Uh, this second, up second is a reminder to please speak directly into your microphone for the VATV broadcast and recording. Um, do we have any items to be removed, added, or changed tonight?
No.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, then up next, number four, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is anybody, nobody online? Okay, and we'll move right into Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-three dash R. Uh, awarding a grant under the Gateway Improvement Program for Batavia Enterprises for eleven North Batavia Avenue. And that is the Boca Ditos Movement.
Yes.
I'm Wendy. Good evening, City Council, how are you? I'm Wendy Reed, and I'm representing Batavia Enterprises Commercial Real Estate for the application for the Gateway Grant for eleven North Batavia Avenue, also known as the Newton House, for restoration, beautification, and improvements related to both needs of the building and the, uh, one of our new tenants that's going to be moving in, uh, the Boca Ditos Restaurant. Uh, the application has been submitted, um, and I was, uh, in a meeting with HPC, and I believe that they made a motion to approve, and that's why I'm standing here tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody on the council have any questions? The, um, I don't remember seeing the height on the fence, the railings in the fence that's going around the front. That's, I'm sure, probably just code for the height, because that's out on the Wilson Street side.
The pa- the patio?
The patio, yeah. Just curious on that.
I, I don't recall the exact height. I, I'm sure it's to comply with the liquor license requirements, so.
Okay.
Um, that, that also is a two-part, um, fence. Um, part of the property on the south end, adjacent to Wilson Street, is city property. Um, so we're working out a lease with the tenant and using the city property there. So, the property line actually only extends fourteen feet from the building wall at that location, so we're working out a, a lease agreement that would allow them to use the rest of the city property there.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? I think this is a great reuse of that building, um, working next door to it for thirty-seven years. It'll be real interesting to have a restaurant I can walk to without crossing a street. Okay? If, uh, there are no other comments or no other questions? Scott, do you have anything additional you wanted to bring up?
No, Anthony was actually gonna present this, but I think he got offline, so.
Oh. Yeah, I'm still here. I just wanted to give, uh, Wendy an opportunity to, uh, speak on a project and just share some information about what they're doing. Um, I did also want to make mention that this is not in a TIF district, is, uh, part of the Gateway Improvement Program, uh, so it's outside a TIF district buffer, so this allows for, uh, BI and Boca Ditos to utilize these funds in order to do, do the work, uh, without using TIF funds.
Thank you for reminding me that. I was gonna mention that I knew this was outside the TIF, and the Gateway Improvement Program is separate from the building improvements that are in, within the TIFs.
Correct. Thank you, Alderman Wolf.
Okay.
And I believe according to the drawings that the fence will be thirty-six inches tall.
So, just three feet, okay. So, it'd be great to say that outside, outside the patio, okay.
I have a question. Um, hi Wendy.
Hi.
Um, so the updates are to, gonna benefit the entire Newton House?
Yes.
And not just Boca Ditos, but?
Yes, it will be the, the restoration of the existing woodwork. A lot of it is old and rotted and needs replacement.
Okay.
Uh, the brick is going to be cleaned with a special peroxide solution to preserve it and clean it properly. It will be painted by a company called Artist Touch, John Happel, if you've ever heard of him, he's very good what he does.
Yes.
Um, the balustrade and spindles, you may have noticed one section, there's that round porch in the front of the property, uh, set, about a four-foot section of that has failed. It's just kind of disintegrated and fallen from the building, so there, there will be masonry work involved with that to restore it to the original, you know, what, they'll recast, they'll, they'll take a section and cast it and make the section to match what's pre-existing at the property. We are going to also modify and improve the, the monument sign. Uh, the artist, Mark Adams, from Water Street Studios, has designed a beautiful sign, and I, and I did include that in my package as well. Uh, the lamppost will also be replaced with more of a, an artistic sign that will also be complementing to the actual monument sign, it'll be, it can be wrapped with like leaves and vines and, and copper. Um, we are also going to be improving naturally for Boca Ditos, uh, the exterior on that, on the south side of the property, there will be a door put into place where there's one window in the center, when you drive by the center window will become a door, and those two windows on either sides will also be replaced. Uh, we are also going to be putting in a patio and the fencing for the patio. There will be an ADA, uh, ramp also. Um, I'm trying to think of everything, there's so many items here. Um, that, that's, that's a pretty good estimation of what's gonna be happening.
And will the ADA ramp give access to the other businesses in the Newton House, or just Boca Ditos?
So, the, all of the other businesses will have access through Boca Ditos. There's a common area throughout the building where, uh, visitors to Boca Ditos can also walk through or, or wheel through the common area to the other existing businesses in the building.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? Well, I for one look forward to seeing, you know, some upgrades and some rebuilding get, getting done there, so I'm looking forward to that.
Are we?
Okay, if there's no other comments, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council Resolution twenty-one dash zero sixty-three R, awarding a grant under the Gateway Improvement Program, Batavia Enterprises for eleven North Washington, or eleven North Batavia Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Was that aye?
Yes, sorry, aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado is absent. Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thirteen, twelve to thirteen.
Okay. And, uh, we should probably put that on the regular agenda so we can talk about it. So, if you wanna come in on our next council meeting, just to talk about what you're gonna do to the building and that the restaurant's moving in there, you can TV for it.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Actually, that motion was thirteen to thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen to no, and one absent. All right, up next is item number six, which is Resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six R, authorizing, uh, twenty-twenty-one Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Replacement Program, uh, contract with builders paving for an amount not to exceed one million eight hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency amount. And Rosado is not here.
I can take it down.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, hello everyone, um, yeah, this one, uh, is interesting, it's, it's a contract for, uh, three annual, uh, programs that we have, uh, Street Resurfacing, Sidewalk Replacement, and New Sidewalk, uh, uh, Program. It was a feeling of staff that, uh, concerned, uh, about possible inflation, could, uh, material costs increase, um, and fuel costs that, uh, we could see significant increase, and by, uh, by, uh, putting them together, bundling them so to say, uh, we could get some better bids for that. Uh, so the bids actually came in better than, than projected, um, and, uh, you know, it's more comparable to last year, um, so I think it's a good thing, uh, and, and for, for whatever reasons that, that it did, uh, come in that way. Um, is Rahat here tonight?
Yes.
And a couple of questions, uh, I have, uh, with this, um, I guess, uh, the, the main one is, are, are you, you pleased that you, you did bundle them together? Because I know it does mess with the, your timing, you know, that everything's gotta be condensed together and, and the sidewalks haven't started yet, when typically we'd be wrapping that up by now.
We are very pleased, uh, by the price, uh, but timing-wise, it's, it's a little difficult, uh, for staff to manage. We do not have a lot of people who can inspect this project. We do inspect all these three program in-house, so, you know, we don't hire any consultant to do the engineering or, or inspection, so it, it becomes a little tougher for us if, you know, all these three contractors are working at the same time, and we have to be at three different places, you know, and, and we don't have, we have literally one person who does all the inspection. So, as engineers will go out and, and help out, but, but it, it's a, it's a big three projects, you know, to, to keep track, especially the sidewalk program is all over the city. You can see that, there are like a lot of small dots, so you have to hop around with the contractor. Street program kinda in, like concentrated within the street, so it's much easier that way, but sidewalk program requires somebody to be like with the contractor all the time. And that's the reason why we always, you know, timed it so that one program ends and then the other program starts, uh, but, but we were worried about the cost, so we said, let's combine them, see what happens, because lot of concrete quantities, uh, in the same place, so we'll probably get a good price, which, which was really good price, you know? Um, another reason why we don't combine them, I kinda mentioned that, uh, once you combine anything with I dot projects, which is I dot funded, it has a higher level of, uh, scrutiny, if you wanna say, they want us to prepare plans and specs which are more I dot standard. Um, you know, you can get, get the same work done without spending that much time in preparing the plans and spec, it's sidewalk removal and replacement. The contractor needs to know where he needs to go, he doesn't need to know how thick and, you know, traffic control and all that, those are pretty standard thing. So, we don't wanna spend the time and energy that we don't feel is necessary to do that sidewalk replacement project. So, that's another reason why we don't combine things, you know, and I dot has a, um, higher requirement on material testing and all that stuff, so we don't wanna spend all this extra money, you know, following I dot guidelines, so, uh, that's, that's probably another reason why we don't combine project.
Yeah, so next year, do you think you'll go back to having them separate? Or depending on the economy?
That's a tough question to answer in, in June of twenty-twenty-one, because we'll see how things goes. I, I asked the contractor who was the lowest bidder, that, you know, we hear about all this inflation and, you know, every price is going up, what happened? And, and he said, it's a cutthroat business, you know, our, they, they have a, they have asphalt plant in Huntley, which is not running at capacity, and they were looking for work that they can, you know, run it at capacity and not lose money. So, he said, your timing kinda worked, you know, you came in when we figured out that Huntley plant is not, uh, at capacity, so we wanna offer you a good price, so that we get the project and, and our, our plant is at, at, uh, you know, at breakeven or maybe a little, little bit profitable. So, the timing kinda walked out for us, um, so, it seems like, you know, I've been doing it for now, I would say seventeen, eighteen years, um, seems like every year, somebody is there who is hungry and who is, um, hoping to get a project at a lower price, and, and we get benefited from that.
Okay. Uh, other question I have, I, I see there's also, uh, we need to adopt, actually, I don't know if we need to do that here, but the I dot resolution, uh, for one point six million from the state, uh, fuel, uh, motor fuel tax, um, is that, uh, so is, that's, that will pay the bulk of this? Along with the Community Development Block Grant?
Uh, yes, so, we use MFT money for the street program, we use, um, we got CDBG money, ninety-four thousand dollar, that will, will get reimbursed, and then sidewalk program is all city-funded, our general fund money. So, the I dot is kind of more of accounting that resolution, that City Council is authorizing one point six million to be spent, uh, from that MFT account, and Peggy at the end, uh, sits down with I dot auditing, MFT auditing, uh, people and kinda like, uh, go through the books, make sure that what you have authorized, we have spent less than that. There is some paperwork that we do after the end of the project, we send I dot paperwork saying, what, you authorized one point six million, but we spent only, let's say, one point five, six million. So, we, we do that, uh, with I dot, and then they come and, and visit us to make sure that all those numbers are, are, uh, jiving with each other. So, because we have more funding available than the bid price, and even with the contingency, my plan is use the MFT fund first, and, uh, then we use the general fund. That way, whatever we don't use out of general fund, kinda like stays in general fund, um, and, and MFT fund gets spent, unless you have other preference to do it.
No, I, I think that's the preferred way, I believe. Um, uh, does anybody else, else have questions?
Alderman Malay, this is Laura Newman. I just wanted to remind folks, we field a lot of questions, um, from people wanting to know, is my street, you know, on the resurfacing program, or is my sidewalk being replaced? And I just wanna remind everybody that, um, on our homepage of our website at the bottom, you can click on a link to City Maps, and there's about a dozen different City Maps there, but one of them is for the capital improvements. And when you pull up capital improvements, it'll show you the twenty-twenty-one sidewalk program, crack fill program, street program, and there are maps there that show you where all of those different projects are being done.
Thank you, Lauren. One, one other quick question I have to add on to that is, uh, when, uh, someone sees a, they have a bad, couple bad sections of sidewalk, um, you know, they can, uh, make a request, I believe, but when, when is the timeline for?
Can I answer? So, um, our, we, we take those requests throughout the year. Our cutoff is typically the Halloween, so the Halloween day, we, we cut it off, um, and we compile all the data, we finish all the inspection, do the design and plans throughout the winter, and then we put it out for bid. Having said that, you know, if we haven't gone out for bid and we have money available, then we always keep adding, you know, the request. Um, there were a couple of requests that came in last two weeks, and we looked at the bid, and we said, we can, we can add those to this program because we'll have some money left, so we'll add those. But typically, it's the Halloween day, we cut it off, uh, but we have gone all, all the way up until Christmas and January to add things to our program, as long as we have the budget available, you know, from the cost estimate.
Perfect, thank you.
Tony, this is Alderman. Aaron?
Yes?
Tony, you actually read my mind on the question about, um, you know, sidewalks and i- if you ever not have, you know, enough for how that, how that works, and is that how, for sidewalks that are decided, is that how it's decided, is mainly from people contacting you, as opposed to somebody kinda walking around and noticing it?
So, I wanna distinguish two things. One is sidewalk removal and replacement program, where you have existing sidewalk, and you feel that this, your sidewalk in front of your property, or anywhere else, you're walking your dog, or walking yourself, and you find a sidewalk which may be a trip hazard, or it's broken. You can call it in, you can just email us or call us, and we'll do inspection. That's for existing sidewalk. The new sidewalk program, we kinda, this is like, kinda like the second year, or if you might say, first year we are doing it, but the Millview sidewalk on Millview, um, just south of Main Street, and then on Locust Drive, um, and there are few sidewalk gaps, like there are sidewalks, but then few pieces are missing, so we are putting those in. So, new sidewalk program is totally a different program, where we have looked at all our sidewalk gaps, and we kinda ranked them already, saying, these are the sidewalks that we are missing in the city completely. Um, our goal is at this time, at least to put sidewalk on one side of the street, uh, but that's, kinda goes through the whole City Council process, we present it to you which one we want to do, and then you kinda bless us, saying which one you want to do. The Locust Drive was kinda driven by the council members, saying you wanted to have that happen. Millview Drive was kinda, you know, was a combined, like the church wanted to get it done, and we wanted to get it done for the school and, and the people who, who park on the streets. Um, so it's, it's a iterative process, but we have a list, and it's on the website, um, of all the, all the streets that are missing sidewalk, what's the difficulty of putting those sidewalks? You know, some sidewalk are maybe very easy to put in, some sidewalks are gonna be very difficult because of what we have on the side of the street, like trees or culverts and other things. But that, that will present to you that this is what we are planning to do, um, next year, and what do you think about it? Um, we have lot of missing sidewalks, and, and we have a famous thing that hundred thousand dollar, we have budgeted now.
Right.
Each year, and it's most likely gonna take hundred years to finish all that, so. But we, we do get lot of requests, you know? There was a resident from, uh, Maple Lane actually contacted us a few days ago, uh, that, you know, she moved in about a year or two ago, and then she wanted sidewalk for her, uh, kids, because, you know, they walk, uh, that neighborhood a few years ago, where people didn't want sidewalk. So, things are changing, evolving that way, and, and we do look at all that. Every year. And also, we are, we look at whether we can get money, uh, from somewhere else to supplement that. Um, we were looking at CDBG money, we have taken advantage of the CDBG money last few years, and resurfaced quite a few CDBG streets or eligible streets. Um, we are looking into, uh, doing income survey and see whether we can make more streets eligible for CDBG funding. Um, if we are not able to do that, then we may look into putting sidewalk in those CDBG streets where there is no sidewalk at all on any side of the street. So, those are the, some of the things that we are looking into at this time.
And what's a, what is a criteria, like, for replacement sidewalk? Isn't it like three cracks?
So, we have, um, I believe, three criterias. One is, it has to be differential of one inch or more, so if the two sidewalks have a differential, or it's, I think, four pieces or more, um, that's.
Broken into four?
Not four cracks, but the sidewalk is broken into four pieces.
Okay.
So, you can have multiple cla- cracks on it. And the third one is, if the surface of that sidewalk is, um, deteriorated fifty percent or more, we call it scaling, like where the surface is kinda like scaling off or breaking out, so if it is more than fifty percent, then that's another criteria that we, we go by.
Okay.
Those are the three criterias.
Okay. You'll probably get a lot of pictures from me coming up.
I, we have, we have those on the, we have those on the website, because when we get calls, you know, we normally leave a door hanger after we do the inspection with the resident, saying sidewalk met criteria, didn't meet criteria, and, and we kinda point to them to the website to look at sample pictures, saying, these are the criteria that we used.
One final question, um, I noticed that some houses, like, m- my house is all asphalt, and there's sidewalk between it, but then as I walk down the street a little bit more, there's some with sidewalk going all the way through. What is the criteria to get the sidewalk, like, not just for me, but also for neighbors when they have to tear out their gr- their driveway and replace it? Is that when a new sidewalk is put in, or how does that work?
So, I, I, it's probably a policy decision, um, that I don't think council has tackled. Um, I may be wrong, I'm here only six years, but when we are doing the Ward One Storm Square Replacement or, or Area Three, what we have done is, for our projects, because all the sidewalk removal and replacement is paid by the city, city in a sense, you know, people at large. So, we have tried to put sidewalk through people's driveway, and that had had lot of unintended consequences, because the sidewalk that you are putting in, it has to go in pretty much flat, at two percent, it's like flat.
Right.
So, if you had a gradual slope on your driveway, now all of a sudden, I'm introducing a break for, for you, so you are gonna come up a little bit, kinda level up, level down for five feet, and then start going up again. And through Ward One, and I'm pretty sure Alderman and you are from Ward One, that you'll be able to tell, that some people were not happy, they just didn't like that, you know, when we put the sidewalk through. Uh, when people come for their driveway replacement, we do not require them to put sidewalk through. It's just when we are doing a project, we put the sidewalk through, because we think that is the right way to do it. Um, ADA actually requires you to have a, you know, sidewalk through the driveways, um, so that's the right thing to do, but if we start requiring residents to put in the sidewalk when they are replacing their driveway, then it will be a very undue burden on them, and, and that's a decision I think council has to make. We have not been asking, yeah, we have not been asking people to do it.
Okay. I, just because I know, and if this question ever comes up.
No, I mean, uh, I mean, the people have brick driveways, you know, putting sidewalk through brick driveways is not, is not simple, and it's not easy, and it's, people have put in thousands of dollar on those brick drivers, you know, so.
Right.
We have sometimes, uh, just didn't put it through, we, we said it's, it's, it's gonna be a unhappy customer, you know, who's gonna, not gonna be happy for us, you know, with us long, long time. But in most cases, when somebody has a asphalt driveway, and it's our project, we are doing it, we will put the sidewalk through.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Certainly, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, any other questions?
I have, I have one real quick. We, um, talked months ago about the sidewalk down Millview to connect, has the, are we thinking about doing?
It's included in this project.
So, we're only going to the end of the church, right?
Yeah.
So, the Park District and Mooseheart, it really hasn't agreed to help us extend it all the way down? Okay.
We just don't have the funding.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Makes it down to the fence, correct?
Yes.
So, half the kids, halfway down, they'll be able to walk on sidewalk instead of in the street.
That, and then, and the kids who park at the church parking lot, it will be a connection for them.
Okay. Instead of trying to run across Main Street from the, the parking lot entrance.
It'd be nice to have, like, almost like one of those crossings, to kinda teach the kids, you know, cross here.
Well, that section of Main Street is gonna get rebuilt, and when it gets rebuilt, the crosswalk will be improved.
Millview.
Millview.
Well, they'll have a sidewalk, or a crossing on each side of Millview, there'll be a cr- a sidewalk.
Right, but it stops at the, at the, uh, fence, so it's not all the way down, all the way to the mill.
Yeah, I mean, the only.
Oh, I got you.
Only stop control crossing will be at Main and Millview.
Right.
But if somebody's going to the park on the other side of the street, they'll be jaywalking.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Uh, seeing them, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, send a council Resolution, um, twenty-one oh six six R, Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Replacement.
Second.
Was that Beck who seconded?
Beck made the motion, and Miller, second. Right?
Okay, clerk, can you take the roll, please?
I thought Miller made the motion.
Beck made the motion. Beck made the motion, Miller, second.
Okay. Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Zirone?
Aye.
Vogel singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Risotto is absent. So motion carried, oh, zero, one, absent.
Thank you, everyone. Um, Alan, one question. Do we need to take action to adopt the I-DOT resolution that was included with this?
Don't think we do that till after the program's override.
No, no, you, you have to do that at the city council.
So that'll just, you wanna put that on the consent agenda?
Do we need to, uh, separate that? I, I included that as, as one resolution.
Is that another resolution that's not on here?
No, so I put it as like item two on res- on the same resolution. If you go down the resolution, there's a section one and section two.
Okay, so it'll be.
I can separate it out if you want separate resolution for that.
I don't know how we've handled it in the past.
I, I don't think we, uh, included that in the resolution. It was always in the memo.
It was always in the memo before?
Yeah.
Um, well, if it's, if it's included in the resolution, then we shouldn't have to approve it, because it's part of the resolution.
Exactly.
Yep, okay, fair enough.
I think we're fine with it.
Yes.
Do we wanna have that on the regular agenda to talk about, since it's a huge program happening? Or do we wanna put it on consent agenda and mention that it's happening?
Advertise, advertise.
I, I, I think people should know, because it's gonna be another bunch of construction that's gonna be happening, and people will be complaining about. We don't say anything, so, regular agenda.
Yes. And we get the, you know, the, the, the grant money from the community development block grant, uh, it's always good to talk about getting grant money.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next would be item number seven, which is ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one. Uh, revising municipal code regarding peddlers, solicitors, and food vendors. Miller, change it.
Thank you. Uh, so this is a continuation of a discussion from earlier in the spring. Um, we made some recommendations, and the staff's incorporated some changes. Uh, just sort of being quickly on the memo, uh, some of the specific changes that were made. Removing the requirement for caution children, uh, crossing signs on the food trucks. Eliminating, uh, requirement for background checks, uh, for vendors. Adding restriction that, uh, food vendor vehicles cannot be used for alcoholic beverage sales. Um, and a clarification, uh, regarding, um, if, uh, business wants to have a food truck on their own, uh, property. There are also some First Amendment issues that were cleaned up by, uh, the city attorney. Um, I guess I would open it up for, uh, discussion.
I have a question.
Um, the, i- it's listed in here with the peddler licenses, like three hundred dollars. Is that also the same for food truck?
Yeah, trying to standardize all the fees.
Everything, okay, so the fee is the same, 'cause I tried to look at it section by section, and it seemed like it wasn't in the, the food truck section.
What it is, it's referenced in the first one, go reference back to the first.
For each, for each one of the sections, okay. So that is the true cost of it?
Correct.
Okay. Now I know how to respond to the email I got, okay.
And this Mark, quick, quick question.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Um, in the, that section about, um, you know, business can have, like, their own food truck. Um, so obviously, so Andres, he has his own food truck, he can continue to do that. Or is it that the property owner is, like, has to approve that? So Riverside wants to put a taco truck and have a taco and pizza night. Is that up to BEI to apply for that, or can Riverside apply for that?
Well, it depends. I mean, if, if it's gonna be a permanent situation, then it should be the property owner, uh, that should be approving that. But it, if it's a special event, then they would just get a special event. This is a one-time thing. But we have, for example, we have the Coconuts, um, ice cream, or the shaved ice guy.
Yep.
Their primary business is not shaved ice, it's something else, but it's, the property is owned, and the, the truck is owned by the owner of that property. So we're trying to kinda accommodate those situations where you may have an unusual, you know, it's a side business, but it's, you know, part of somebody else's prop- their own property. But it, for the case that you're talking about, for something like that, that would probably just be a special event permit, and that's allowed under the, under this revision as well.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Amy?
Um, a question that I have, when I'm looking at the map and the buffers, is it, like, how is it drawn? Is it from the center of the property, is it from the front door of the property?
It's from the door of the property or the walls of the property, not the property line.
Not the property line, but each wall, so two hundred?
Each wall, or whatever line is closest to, you know, if, if they're gonna go to, say, Riverside Pizza. We would take the measurement from the wall, the outside wall of Riverside Pizza, and then say two hundred, can't be closer than two hundred feet from that. If we did the property, then obviously there'd be a much bigger area that would not fall.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I struggled with this the last time we discussed it, and I still struggle with it, and I might be the only one, but it. There are some places like, like the open dining area we have on Water Street, that seems like a logical place to put a restaurant. There's no restaurants on it, there's no restaurants, you know, adjacent to it. Um, that if something is off to the side of or behind the property's front door. You know, I don't want, I don't want a coffee truck pulling up in front of Limestone, and I don't want a burger joint pulling up in front of Sidecar. But, you know, to have a, a, a something, something pull up on Water Street where there isn't anything, you know, right there adjacent, just seems like it would add so much, um.
Where on Water Street?
The open dining area.
Yeah, and a Water Street, depends on, depends on where.
Riverside have a problem with it, though?
What's that?
Would Riverside have a problem with it? Because the idea of putting in the outdoor public dining was so restaurants in the area like Riverside and Hot Pan. Would, uh, be able to have their patrons have an outdoor area to dine during COVID. But maybe the philosophy of those areas has now changed, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with Abby, like, I think the idea of food trucks, they're so popular now. I think the whole idea's completely changed than what they were previously. And I think to have them for like, a, you know, a permit, like, it's not like they're gonna be camping out there and overtaking anything. They're almost like a hop in the area and an al- alternative dining option. And a lot of places on the weekend, people can't get into.
Mm-hmm.
And, or they don't, you know, they don't have the service people to provide the service. So, you know, maybe we need to think at what's going on right now, you know, the popularity of that.
One thing that could be an option is they could do a special event permit for something like that. So if there is a, you know, let's say they wanted to be there for an entire summer, you know, or, you know, every Thursday or something like that. We could, we could address that through a special event permit.
How much is that?
We don't charge for special event permits, actually.
So is that, I, is that much different than just allowing them in certain areas? Or removing some of the restrictions to just?
Just to pop up?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, when we issue the food vending permit, um, they could locate wherever they want to. We don't, we don't specify that in that permit, as long as they aren't within the prohibited areas, essentially. So if they want to go, you know, within the prohibited areas, then we'd have to talk about doing that separately through a special event, or either they have to be sponsored by a restaurant or something like that.
Like our farmer's market, I would love to see more pop-up vendors there, like, there's not a lot for breakfast options.
And, and the, and the, and for example, the, the food, the, um, farmer's market is considered a special event. So you could have food trucks at the, at the farmer's market.
In fact, they do.
They, they do.
Well, it's.
Holy pierogi.
They have pierogis up in there, there's little donuts.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I think what else?
So, of course, and that, and that's, and that's a, you know, repetitive special event that happens periodically throughout the summer. So if they wanted to do that, and if they wanted to, you know, ask for that somewhere else, you know, they could certainly, you know, Park District property or whatever, they could, they could certainly do that through the special event.
But we did receive a complaint when a barbecue truck, um, pulled up at the boardwalk shops right across from the brick and mortar barbecue restaurant. Who felt that that negatively affected his business.
As, as well as the hot dog cart.
But if a.
We felt that there were some people that were complaining about the hot dog cart being competition for other restaurants, so.
But we don't have any mechanisms to prohibit a brick and mortar barbecue shop from popping up across the street from another barbecue shop. As, you know, like.
But there is a argument that the, the brick and mortar is creating a lot more investment in the community, because they are, you know, building a restaurant, they're creating, you know. They have taxes to pay, they have facilities they have to build, bathrooms and all that stuff. So there's a lot more long-term, permanent investment in the community that happens with a brick and mortar restaurant.
And that particular restaurant owner had been offered the opportunity to be the barbecue person across the street. But didn't have sufficient personnel in order to both staff his restaurant and have a pop-up situation across the street.
And, you know, the option also is, don't, don't forget, this is not cast in stone. So if we pass this and we find something is not working, we can revisit it and say, you know what? Okay, maybe the setback isn't working, because we had two, three, you know, food vendors say that, you know, we told them to, you know, they can't be there. And, you know, keep in mind also, this is going to be a, um, an honor system to an extent. You know, if somebody is, is within the setback zone, you know, unless we get a complaint about it, we're probably not gonna be chasing them out of an area.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Um, yeah, when I think about, like, our downtown and where it is right now in terms of restaurant availability, like, I know when we go out, we are gonna go to Hot Pan. We are gonna go downtown, and we're going to go to Riverside. We don't, we don't quite have, like, the critical mass to just be like, let's go downtown to Tavian, see where we end up. You know, it's, it's always a destination at this point. And I think, like, to what Jennifer was saying, is that, that food trucks bring a lot of excitement and a destination that, that draws people in. That as much as it might deter from an existing brick and mortar restaurant, it's what the retail needs in order to get the food traffic to just mingle around and kinda see what retail options are out there. And so I know one example that was brought up recently is that a retail establishment wanted to have a donut truck in front of their business, but they were told no, because the. Because they were on the backside of a pizza place that was only, you know, wasn't even open at the same time, but, uh, you know, they're in that buffer, so that, that kind of.
Aren't they allowed to have an event?
With, with this revision, they would be allowed to do that.
Yeah, they would be allowed to do it.
Yeah, because the business would be sponsoring a, a, a food truck.
A food truck. And so on private property, I guess that's actually.
They would, they would, you know, if you had a, you know, a jewelry store or whatever, and they said, you know, we wanna have an, an event with a food truck, as long as they're sponsoring it, then they could have it there.
So if a clothing store wants to have a barbecue truck and sponsor a barbecue truck?
Yep, exactly, yep, right.
Right.
That's, that's the whole point.
And even under this scenario, the barbecue situation that I was talking about, that would be allowed, 'cause it was an event.
Right.
Would, uh, are there setbacks in, like, some of the other adjacent towns?
Yeah, most towns have, have setbacks. I mean, you know, this is, this is somewhat based on the Chicago ordinance, not totally, but, you know, it's, it's two hundred foot setback is, is what we've seen in most communities, is a setback that's been established.
Yeah, because if you don't, I, I mean, I've read articles about, you know, businesses that complain when week after week, there's a taco truck on the corner, you know, a hundred feet from their business.
And keep in mind, some of these trucks are relatively big, so if you have, especially if you have a series of them, you're gonna block the view of those restaurants too, so.
Yeah, I read a couple of those articles too, and it was just like, it, one of them said, you know, Chicago's attempt, Chicago is outlawing food trucks. Like, that was how their, their setbacks were drawn, to outlaw them in their downtown. I was like, I don't wanna outlaw them, like, that seems like the wrong approach, so.
Chicago's ordinance is a lot tougher than this one is. I mean, the setback is in place, but, you know, they had other things about, you know, moving the truck within a certain number of hours and everything else. We don't, we don't put anything like that in this, in this ordinance. They had, they had a lot of, you know, really tough regulations in place as part of their ordinance, so.
But they have allowed it, 'cause on Whacker, they've got, they've got food truck road.
Right, what they, and they've also established certain zones in some of their ordinances too, where you can actually have them in some places. Whacker, you know, you don't have a lot of restaurants, depending on, you know, where you are.
I believe that's what Aurora did too, with their, their reoccurring night.
Mall in one area.
They have a mall in one area.
One day a month?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, that's what I would, that's what I would like to see, is in an area.
Yeah.
Specialized for food truck, food truck platform, which is out of the way for everyone else.
Almost one time a month on Water Street, just to get some action over there.
Yeah.
And that's, and that can be addressed with a special event permit.
Mm-hmm.
We could, we could, we could do it that way.
But a, but a.
But we don't charge anything for that.
But a food truck, but a food truck pull a special event permit for itself and have a special event in a parking spot, or like, that's still.
Right.
Somebody, you know, like, it's, we're still saying, like, you're not allowed here unless somebody programs it.
You've been invited by a downtown business.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't.
But I think, I think, you know, to look at it on a, on a, on a greater scale, I mean, if we have an area that we wanna say, hey, you know what? We want Water Street to be the food truck zone. You know, I think we could do that, but we'd have to probably do that separately from, you know, how we're addressing it here. And maybe that's, that's a separate ordinance that would come back and say, okay, this is, you know, Water Street is a food truck zone, we allow food trucks there regardless of the setbacks from adjacent businesses, if we wanted to do that.
I think that's a good idea. I would, I would put that forward if another Alderman wanted to join me to have that discussion sometime.
I'll join you.
Okay.
Zone.
Or even, even along, I can't even think of the rope here, in front of the park.
Houston? Houston?
Houston, yeah.
This one?
This one. I mean, it might not be ideal, but.
We, we can come back with that.
Anybody, anyone care to make a motion?
Uh, I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I had one, I have several. Like, in, in number eight, they asked for a statement about the food truck vendor being properly trained. Is that something that Kane County already does? Health Department already, already has, or is that something we're duplicating?
No, we're not duplicating anything. If the county requires, uh, certain training and things, that that will recognize that.
Okay, so this is something separate from what Kane County asked for?
It would, well, they basically would just have to prove up that they were trained or whatever they did train. Which, which section you talking about?
Um, page sixteen, number eight. Cut the first part of that off, so I don't know what. It's before three-seven-C.
Um, statement that food vendor has been properly trained to handle. Um, yeah, I mean, if they just, if they provided us proof of their food license with, with the county, that would be sufficient.
But didn't that what, number five is up above?
Yeah. So, I mean, there's probably, there's probably some level of duplication on that, I guess, I suppose, so we can, we can fix that.
And then, um, so the next one down, they asked for, in the memo, we, we removed the requirement for a background check, but then we asked them for a statement of whether or not they're a felon. That's essentially is a background check, isn't it? Um.
Is that for the peddler and solicitor?
No, that's under the food.
Yeah, number nine.
Read that as just honor system. Sign your name that you don't have a felony conviction. Doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna conduct a background check, but you're certifying that you don't have any felony convictions when you apply for this permit.
But then, but down below, it says that in the next one, where they issued the license, it asked for that having a convicted, being having a convicted felon working, you know, by the applicant or someone that works for them denies them the license. So, I mean, we, we're, I mean, I, I am perfectly fine with the one about sex offenders, 'cause there's gonna be kids all around. But like, let's say we get someone who has felony for something minor, it automatically discrudes, discourages them, or denies them a license. You know, there may be someone that just couldn't get a loan for a brick and mortar place, but they can get a loan for a food truck.
Kind of likes starting now.
Whether or not they can slang some good tacos or some burgers or something, shouldn't discourage somebody from coming to our town and getting a license. But also, someone that does that won't get a license from us and just be in our town slanging their food. We won't get any of the money from any of this for the license.
Well, I mean, they wouldn't be able to sell the food if they don't have a license.
But we're not gonna go chase people around. They could be out on outskirts of downtown.
I, I, I would say that, you know, we will probably spot check to make sure they have licenses. I mean, if they, you know, it's not gonna be something that we're just gonna, or we see somebody, you know, that looks like, well, who is, you know, we've never seen this entity in, in the town before. We'll probably spot check and say, do, do you have a license from us? If not, we'll say, hey, you know.
But do we, do we think that having, having been a convicted felon should deny somebody from getting a license in our town? Whether minor or how, how?
No, I think they would, they have to jump through enough hoops to get a vehicle and get licensed through the, the state or, um, their food handler license.
As you say, does the county, does the county health department have that requirement?
I don't think they look at that, 'cause they look strictly from a health.
Right.
From a health perspective, so they have nothing.
But they require a food handler license, so they, you know, they have to get that licensing, you know. Somebody that, you know, I guess, as you say, somebody that has a felon, I'm not sure they'd go through all those hoops to try and commit another felony. It's probably somebody trying to rebuild their self.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
That's why I would, having a, a felon, being, having a felony shouldn't deny you one of our licenses. That's why I'm asking, I wanna know if, if we agree or not agree, I'll go whichever way we all decide of, of taking that part out.
Because we don't, we don't issue business licenses at the city level for anything else. So we would never.
Well, we, we, we issue licenses for certain things, like, like, like massage, you know.
Right, right.
And we do, we do limit people that have, you know, conviction, you know, and certain things for massage licenses.
But a taco.
Rental dwelling licenses, if you don't know.
A taco brick and mortar could open up a legitimate thing and not ever have to tell the city. and not ever have to tell the city of Batavia if they got caught with weed.
I think that's a little we need to take.
I strongly agree with removing that language. If they go through the hoops of having to obtain the food license, that is rigorous enough.
So we could strike the line about convicted of a felony.
Yeah, so we will, we will need to change number nine regarding the felony part. So we, I think we strike that entire paragraph. And then under that, 3-7C-3.13, we'll also strike the part regarding a felony. We'll keep the part regarding sex offender, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's going to be kids all around, I think, near kids anyway.
Right, and so we'll stri, we'll strike the part regarding a felony and then keep the sex offender part there. Okay? Can you do that?
I don't think that was listed anywhere else in the peddlers.
I'll double check, I'll do a spell checker.
Anything for, yeah, for felony, just look for that and if there's anything else.
We would keep it on the peddlers and solicitors because they're walking up to people's homes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a more intimate setting as opposed to-
And that's what I was saying, is it, is it in there?
Yes, it's in, it's in the other two sections.
Okay.
Because we have had problems in the past of people just walking down the street and trying door handles to see what doors were open. And so if somebody was trying to get credentials to look like they belonged in a neighborhood to have access to do that, that would be one way they could do it, would be to get a peddler's and solicitor's license.
That's cheaper than a $300.
Much.
Yeah, but if you were registered, then we'd be able to catch them. Somebody would get them on a ring and then we'd know it, know who they were.
I have a question. So I'm just curious differing the, between private property and public space for businesses. Let's say somebody wanted to host some type of food truck. I'm using, we'll just use, on Wilson Street. But you couldn't have it like in a parking spot on city property.
On off-street.
It would have like-
We, we, we've considered allowing that in the past and as, so long as it isn't going to be an obstruction where it is at, that would be allowed.
So for like a special event, you could have a food truck?
Exactly.
We allowed it at the tattoo place on Wilson Street before, so.
Okay. We, we've allowed that.
Okay.
And just as a side note on peddlers, that includes storm chasers going door to door after a Haley van.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I've got some pictures if you'd like.
Yeah.
When I asked the one gentleman if he had a solicitor's permit and he said yes, and I said, can I see it? He said, well, it's in process. Said, oh, so you don't have one? And that was about the time he got back in his truck and left.
So that's, that would cover those types of situations. That's door to door soliciting of their services.
Right. Those were my great fire starters for fire pit.
What, the trucks or the?
No, the, all the paperwork that gets left after that.
Yeah.
I just don't appreciate the people that you don't know who they are coming up knocking on your door saying, hey, would you like me to climb on your roof?
No.
No solicitor stickers also help a lot.
Yeah, but then-
I've, I've seen a number of them turn around on my door, so.
But then you can't have fun and ask them some questions that really-
The problem is when you're out in your, the problem is, it's fine for the door, but if you're out in the yard and they don't see it, that's when they nail you for a lot of reasons, so.
Any more questions? If not, does someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve ordinance. With the amendment.
With the amendments as requested.
Second.
Motion and second, any additional discussion?
I'm sorry, the second was?
Alderman Knapp.
See, it was so easy to figure those out when we were all online because you had to say your name so that it, you know.
Kansas?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Soto is absent. Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Motion carried. 13-0-1 absent.
Motion made by Miller too.
And because-
Motion was made by Miller.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
And because of the changes, I'll just put this on the regular agenda.
Yeah.
At least the revising.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, up next is Resolution 2165-R, authorizing agreement with ClearGov for budget and transparency subscription service.
After I saw the memo, I was just wanting to kind of say, I make a motion.
It's about time.
I feel like I've been waiting 10 years for this memo, so.
I thought I picked you to come up with here to cheer.
For sure, yeah.
We have a parade in here from the department and everything.
So tell us why this company is the one that pushed you over the edge.
They came up with a new product for creating the budget book that makes it very easy with a touch of a button. It will compile all of the documents together and automatically number the pages for us and create a table of contents. And from that, we can do a PDF of the budget book or we can have an interact, we can have both. We can have a PDF and an interactive page on our website where you can just click on different aspects of the budget rather than just having a PDF tab.
So that doesn't mean that I'm not going to get the thick book this year?
Happy to print one out for you if you'd like.
I won't need one? I don't need one, I could do the online version, or I could.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how the draft portion will work yet. We haven't had our kickoff meeting yet to go through the details. They do have it set up though, so that the city council can see the draft online, if that's how.
I'd like to do it that way before you print one out for me so I can see how it looks like. I'd really like to have less paper.
Yeah.
I, I'd love, I'd love to be able to come back to the public in a year and say, you know that giant stack of paper that we all sit and look at? It's gone. We don't have to do that anymore.
I think the rest of the finance staff would be very happy to not print it out and assemble it as well.
For sure. And then also too, I did see in the memo that it just, the data entry portion is going to be substantially easier moving forward too.
Yes, for, for all of the department heads. We'll be able to populate this year's budget into next year for them to use as a starting point. So if they didn't have any increases, they wouldn't have to key it in again. We, we don't have any real capability with our current software. I mean, it works and we were paying zero for 30 years, so. We can't really complain about that because we saved a lot of money by not having to pay for support or anything. But nowadays, most software, you pay a subscription service fee rather than paying to purchase it and then paying annual support. All of those that we looked at were the same way, where you would pay an annual subscription. And there was one that was really fancy and really nice, but it was way out of our price range. In fact, this one was considerably higher. And I was able to work with them and come up with this price that I felt was reasonable and fair for the services that we would receive. And I don't know if you saw in my memo, we'll also have a transparency page on the website where people will be able to look at current financial data interactively.
The way I look at it was all this money that you've saved all these years for not investing in one of these, driving this hoop-dee around, I'm ecstatic to make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-65-R, authorizing an agreement with ClearGov for budgeting and transparency subscription services.
Second.
Motion and second, any additional discussion? Call the roll.
Kansas?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Soto is absent. Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Motion carried. 13-0-1 absent.
Thank you.
I would say talk about it only because it's another chance to talk about the transparency.
Right, and I was just going to say, I think that's a good thing, again, to bring up that that's just another step we're taking to make it as easy as we can for people to see it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Up next is item nine, which is Resolution 21-67-R, authorizing breaker replacement for Batavia substation contract with MP systems for an amount not to exceed $439,599, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Alderman Serone?
Sure, if, well, actually, if Rahat is still there, I'm going to give him the opportunity to announce the substantial savings on this. Not often do, do they get to do this. So Rahat, would you like to present this resolution?
So back in 2018, we identified some of the breakers in our substations have some Corona issue. And, and we cleaned them up. It's like foreign particles, you know, into different parts of the breakers. We cleaned them up, but it cost us like $30,000 to $40,000 every time we clean. We cleaned it a few times and then we said it's not worth it, you know, spend $30,000, $40,000 every few months. So we looked into replacing those breakers. So we hired a consultant to design the breakers. So we purchased them from Siemens and Siemens has delivered those breakers, 11 breakers, to the northeast substation last month. They actually manufactured those in Mexico, so I was getting calls from there saying we are bringing the breakers to your substation on this day. So we unloaded them and, and we hooked them up to electricity to keep them, keep them warm, if you, if you might say. We also, at the same time, we put it out for bid because we need to get a contractor who will take out the existing breakers and put the new ones in. Sounds pretty simple, but you have to take out the service to that breaker out, so it has to be completely without elec, any electric supply. Our estimate is each breaker will take about three weeks to remove and replace. And the new breakers are not the same as the old breakers. So it, they come with an adapter plate, you know, so that the foundation size is kind of smaller for the, for the, for the new breakers. So we, we ordered adapter plates with those breakers. So it's going to take about three weeks for each breaker, so 11 breakers, that's a lot of weeks. But we will allow the contractor to do the entire southeast substation at the same time, so they can do three breakers at the same time. Then we'll switch to the northeast substation and we have two 34 KV breakers. So we'll do like one breaker plus the 312, 1200 or 12 KV breakers. So we can do like four breakers at a time. So it's not going to take years, rather it will take a few months to, to get done. We got good bids. I don't really have a good sense of the bread, the bid spread. You can see it's almost doubled from the lowest to the highest. But my understanding is, you know, some people have a lot of work, some people don't have work. So the, the people who don't have work, they are going after things. I mean, we, I, I said that estimate was 750, that's also was up in the air, in a sense. We were thinking at that time how we are going to accomplish this work. So as we progressed with the design and the bidding process, we had a better handle on how we are going to replace it. So at the time we did the estimate, we thought we'll do one breaker at a time and it's going to take a lot of time. So, so our estimate was kind of also from 400 to 750, I'll tell you that. So if I put my numbers in there, it, it also ranged heavily from low to, low to, bottom to top. I also provided the breakdown of the budgeted item that we have. I believe it's called breaker replacement at Batavia Substation under the 2021 budget. Alderman Serone is correct that we will be, if everything goes well, we'll be able to save some money from this project. The contractor is actually eager to go. He has contacted me and, and already supplying, you know, things for us to review. So even though he knows comedy is, discussing it today, he's, he's eager to get started and, and get the project done, so. Any question?
Well, they, they've already done work for us, correct?
They have, so they-
The northeast substation-
The northeast distribution substation was kind of, they were the general contractor for, for that substation.
Maybe they just like working with us, that's why we got such a good price.
Yeah, I mean, he, he was not there at the bid opening, so he emailed me saying, can I get the bid result? And I didn't even give him a chance. I said, you got the bid, here is the number, you know, so.
All right. Awesome, well, whenever you make a mistake, it's better this way than the other way, so. If nobody else has any questions, I would make a motion to set a positive recommendation to city council, Resolution 2167-R, authorizing breaker replacement for substations contracts with MP systems.
Second. Miller? Okay. Wait, someone's there. Okay. Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Soto is absent. Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Motion carried. 13-0-1 absent.
Okay, thank you. All right, up next is item number 10, a discussion on off-street parking regulations. Who wants to start this off? Drew? He's coming up.
So there was a, we had the discussion last month regarding the parking regulations. The committee did request we kind of come back with some additional information and research. So that was outlined in the memo. The first item that I covered in the memo was about the downtown residential parking requirements. We did pull basically some surveys that were done by Geneva and Glen Allen, and then we did pull some additional municipalities to try and round things out because those were a little more centric on, you know, bound, areas that have transit-oriented downtown areas. So we wanted to try and have a little more mix of some of the sample properties or communities. We found basically, we were on the high end on the upper bedroom counts, the two and three bedroom, or three or more bedroom counts. And then we're kind of middle in the pack of the studio and one bedroom. So we did, in terms of potential draft language, we did include moving down the two or more bedroom count to two unit, or two parking places per unit. The one item that we did kind of note in the memo also So one conversation point that the committee may want to discuss is whether we should apply that lower number to other multifamily properties. The next item in the memo that we tried to cover additionally was parking maximums. We were able to find some examples in northern Illinois communities. Some of them are more recently probably crafted regulations, just based on the fact that they were, some communities that did some more comprehensive rewrites to their ordinances. But there were some, at least some examples that we did find of where that threshold is, of where the different communities applied the maximum. And that varied from, I believe, 125 to 175. We're proposing, at this point, the 125 as that maximum for our proposed text. Did note in the memo that there were some examples where they did have that upper threshold, but they did add, basically, some additional requirements, either permeable pavers. And that was, I believe, South Elgin had a permeable paper requirement between thresholds. So basically, there was a maximum, but if you went over that maximum, there was additional requirements that you would have to apply from a detention standpoint and from just green practices. We did do some additional research on the fee and loo question. Specifically, the committee was looking for how much we've spent on parking, basically use our numbers. So I did kind of go through the steps of what we paid for both the yard stop and the North River Street, the former Larson Becker property. And then there was a, it's kind of examples of a small project, or, you know, a smaller size, once enough, and then a larger parking field. And then those both exclude, or those figures also excluded the cost of land. As you build in the cost of land, which I did for the North River Street example, because that was, or that was one purchase, so it was a little simpler versus the yard stop, which we purchased over a period of years. So it was a little more, it might not have been a best example from a land acquisition standpoint. But we did find, basically, after you apply the cost increase, you know, standard cost increase of 3%, and then you apply the land transaction costs, we got to, basically, $9,200 per space, which was, you know, very close to the initial concept of a $10,000 fee and loo figure. So we do feel like that if the committee would like to approach with a fee and loo, that $10,000 number does have some backing behind it if it was pursued. So those were kind of the additional research we did. I did include those examples of maximum language in the memo as well. And if there's any questions, I can answer those, and otherwise, we're looking for probably direction to proceed to public hearing if comfortable.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody online? Abby?
I have a question about St. Charles. I was surprised to see them ones across the board in terms of all four of their levels being not a transit, no, not having a train stop downtown.
We were a little surprised by that, too, that they had that. I think part of it is that they have a lot, they have a pretty robust garage system in St. Charles, so they have also a number of ground lots that are 24-hour lots. So they have a lot of ability for people to park outside of a complex, so I think that's part of why they have those numbers.
Now, the only other comment I had to your question about applying the minimums to downtown or across the board, I would vote that we extend them across the board. Other than that, thank you for all of the research and all of the tables and making it so clear.
The danger in applying them across the board, particularly in industrial areas, is that if a building is built for a use which has minimal parking requirements, it makes, if we need to find a new user for that building, it limits the type of business that would be able to then utilize that industrial building. So completely understand for, you know, retail area, commercial zone, residential zone, but the industrial is a little bit difficult, has some unique concerns.
Yeah, Laura, this is Mark. I understand what you're saying there, but that's onus on the builder. Builder doesn't want an empty property if somebody were to move out. That's on them, in my opinion. So if they're willing to do less and take that chance, they're still going to pay the tax revenue to the city. You won't have an occupied building, but that's on them.
If it's built to suit just a particular owner turned over by the developer to that building owner, it could remain vacant for a long time if that user that it was built for vacates it.
And I think one of the other problems is that we have challenges in trying to make up that parking after the fact. So if we, you know, approve a building that has substandard parking, most of the time, especially in industrial districts and sometimes in the commercial districts, we don't have any other place to put them. You know, we don't, I don't know of any town that does a parking garage for industrial development. So, you know, that creates its own challenges in trying to retrofit that after the fact. You knock down, if another user comes in there that has a higher parking demand, do they now have to buy another building to knock it down to build a parking lot? So I think from the downtown district, I think that's a little bit different, because we do have the public parking lots, the on-street parking that helps offset that and create that relief bell. But I think when we start getting into these other districts, that creates more of a challenge. And, you know, I think as we talked about on the committee level, I think, you know, I think it would be appropriate to start this and see how it goes. And if we don't, you know, see a problem, again, we can go back and amend the ordinance to expand it into other areas if we think that makes sense. But I think this, you know, is something different for our community, and, you know, we don't have a robust transit system here, so we don't really have, you know, a way to allow some of these uses and have other transportation methods. So, you know, we think the downtown area makes the most sense, but, you know, trying to expand it to other areas, I think we should probably wait on that and see how it goes in their downtown first.
Do we exclude the industrial zone instead of not applying it to all these other areas?
Well, I think we're talking about, you know, all the different districts. I think we're, you know, right now, we're only proposing this in DMU District. So, you know, I think it applies to other districts, too. I mean, commercial districts potentially, you know, if you had a big box store, and I think that's why we wanted to have the maximums that we talked about, is to, you know, say, okay, there's a limit on that. But if we basically say you don't have to have any parking, you know, you could have somebody sell off their entire parking lot. One person decided to sell off their entire parking lot for development, and then, again, once you lose that, you don't have any way to get that back. And in commercial, you know, using Randall Road's example, if there's not enough parking, people are either going to not go there, or they're going to park on other people's property, and then we're going to get, you know, situations where people are going to be barricading their parking lots. I've seen this happen in another community I worked in. You had a parking lot that looked like it was a community lot, but people started putting barricades at the property line to say, you can't come across my parking lot, because I don't want your parking on my lot. So that's created some problems in some cases.
But I would also argue that it's kind of chicken or the egg. The reason we don't have a robust transit system that can accommodate a lot of people is because we've built so spread out, and we've built these giant parking lots that keeps everything too far apart, that transit can't, people can't support transit because destinations are not close enough to be able to use transit as a viable option. So by doing this, we're moving ourselves closer to a point where we would have transit options farther down the line. And we'll never have that critical mass on, I mean, that's what the PACE, the folks from PACE, when they came here and spoke to us and we asked what could be done, they talked about land use changes, and they talked about the fact that Randall Road can't sustain the transit because it's not built to, it's only built for cars. So until we have density in that critical mass on Randall Road, then we are kind of, we're kneecapping our transit options that do exist.
So my understanding from the folks that we talked to at PACE was that they are seeing a decline in ridership for local stops, and that where they see the future are like the buses that they're putting on the expressways to prevent people from having to get in their cars, to go to the airport, and kind of solving the problem of getting long distances versus shorter distances.
Right. But from an equity standpoint, in terms of supporting Batavia and Batavians, we need to be looking at whether or not our destinations are accessible to people, to people, not just automobiles. And I think that that's, with the whole walkability and bikeability push in town, should be looked at for transportation and making sure that we've got destinations that people can access so that all people can live here and drive here and not just cars.
I think the worry on the flip side of that is that if there isn't a place to park a car when you're going shopping, that one of the options would be to take a bus, another option would be to go someplace else.
But I think we also have to look at this as being very incremental, and we're not going to see, we're not going to see somebody, the target developer, go through and cover his entire property, because he knows that we are still a suburb, we are still suburban, and culture and mindsets are still where they are, that it's going to take a series of very small changes to move us into a direction where we're serviced by transit. So that is really like a far-off dream, that we have to start with little changes like this in our code to allow to happen, that nobody's going to do that right now, because they know that people are not going to come, and they are not going to do something that is going, the market is going to deny in 2021. But slowly over time, as gas becomes more expensive, as our roads become more expensive to upkeep, all the other things that are falling into place, people don't support, people don't want to live in cities that are only built for cars anymore, you know, that's when stuff starts to move, and that's where these minimums and maximums start to allow us to build in that direction.
I get what you're saying, and I'm thinking, you know, I've read a couple of articles about where the future of electric vehicles is proposed or poised to go, and I don't know if we're going to really end up with less vehicles on the road. I think we're going to end up with different vehicles on the road to be able to try to be sustainable. And, you know, I'd love to say, yeah, I think PACE could handle this, but I don't know where the public transportation system's going to be in 20 years. Because on the way it is now and the way it's funded, especially in this state, it might not be a viable option, because there might not be enough tax money to support it.
Yeah, we've moved all of these destinations out of walking and driving. We have defunded public transportation to get people where they want to be, and then we want the people that are struggling and can't get a job to pull themselves up by their bootstraps, where they have to own a car, which costs $8,000 a year, and if you're making $30,000 a year and you have to spend $8,000 on a car, that's fine for somebody making 60 to 70, whatever, you know, else is average. But for people that are struggling, that you shouldn't have to own a car to participate in society, is obviously my overarching, like, ethos. But like, these are the little discussions that help us move towards a more equitable place. I don't think there will be more cars on the road, there may be the same amount of cars on the road, but people that want options are going to gravitate towards places that have options. So I think Batavia should be a place that gives people options.
And I think that's why we tried to focus this on the downtown district area primarily first, because we wanted to see how that's going to be. And, you know, there is more ability to have walkability and bikeability in the downtown area, because it's a denser area, so you don't have to necessarily get in your car to get from one side of downtown to the other. So we felt that with the public parking lots and, you know, with the ability for people to walk into the center of the community, that's really where you want to concentrate the focus and the density of the downtown. Randall Road is kind of its own animal, which I think we want to try and mitigate some of the additional parking lots to an extent. And I think some of that's going to happen organically over time. You know, you're going to have, maybe Kohl's or Target are going to say, you know what, we've got a big parking lot, you know, we'd like to sell off some of this. I mean, we've seen it happen in Geneva and St. Charles with, you know, some of the outlot development they've had there. So, you know, I think that's going to happen over time, if, once they decide they don't need some of those parking lots. But, you know, there's a mechanism and there's a process to do that through the plan development and through our, you know, various zoning codes. They have to go through, they have to go through a zoning approval anyway to subdivide the property anyhow. So, I mean, it wouldn't be that much more difficult to have a plan development that would allow for, you know, some deviation from parking requirements and that.
And right now, where we're showing the maximum would be the general commercial district, so that's kind of the first place we're applying that maximum in that change to 4.204, where we're saying what used to be just required parking, we're calling it minimum required parking, and then we're adding maximum, too, so. So that is kind of the starting point to try some of this also.
I'd be perfectly okay with changing it out in the commercial districts. I don't know in the industrial district that I would want to do that, because I think you're right, Scott. I think if you build a building on a footprint on a piece of property, you're not going to tear down part of that building because you need more parking, because you changed the use, or you want to change use, you're going to find a building somewhere else that has the parking lot you can use. And I think that would be the issue we'd have there.
And we've had, I've had situations in my career where, you know, we had, you know, industrial buildings are, you know, one of those buildings that has different types of uses that happen. So, you know, you built it for manufacturing, for storage, but because of the high ceilings, it becomes a recreational facility. And those types of buildings often have a much higher parking demand, and if you don't have a parking lot, they spill out onto the street, they spill out onto the adjacent properties. So, you know, that's something that has to be thought about as a change in use, obviously.
I've got one of those a block away from me on Main Street.
So why can't we just exclude the industrial? Because if we're covering commercial, and I think that the residential, if an apartment building is going to go up in a current residential zone, that the same standard should be applied to it across the board.
Talking about the maximums?
The minns and the maximums, yeah, for residential for over four units. And so I feel, isn't excluding industrial a simpler solution than, and then think about neighborhood commercial, or whatever that zoning is for West Town. Don't we want to have a higher density and be, you know, get more amenities there in the neighborhood than just expand, you know, require parking lots there?
We do already have parking issues in that area on Main Street, across from Jim Anderson's building. They're having to borrow spaces or lease spaces from the Pedersen property that's across the street, which is sometimes they have use of them and sometimes they don't.
Which one's Jim Anderson's place?
It's the, where the antique store is, and the State Farm, I think, or L State.
715, where they wanted the depressed curb along Main Street.
Where they used to park across the sidewalk.
I'm just trying to figure out, because I go through there all the time.
There's ample street parking there around the corners, too. Like, there's plenty of parking, you know, far closer than the Target parking lot, where you park to get into Target than from where you'd park to get into the antique shop.
What does everybody think? Just exclude industrial?
Seems to make sense.
I think that's fine. You know, and if we, I think of the areas that we have in my mind left to build apartment buildings or development, or the reuse of, we'll call them the Randall Road lots, I can see it happen. And, you know, I actually was just out with my wife in Geneva last week, and as we're trying to zigzag our way back out to Randall Road, I'm like, you know, I don't think I've ever seen a car parked out in this parking lot, out in the front of Best Buy out there. I mean, there's a whole section, probably 250 parking spaces, that virtually, unless there's something for sale or semi that's parked there, there's really nothing ever in those lots.
And I don't think more big box shops are popping up.
No.
Those are going away.
No, I think they're going to end up smaller. You know, as far as the neighborhood stuff goes, I think it's going to turn around to what this used to be in the '30s, '40s, and '50s. It's going to start from downtown and work its way back out.
Well, and on that note, we've already seen, like, Oberweis built a building, that parking lot.
Out in the front corner there.
On the front, and then same across the street in Home Depot, that little...
An antique store.
At St. Charles, Wahlburgers and the other, there's a Starbucks store, maybe?
And fortunately for us, or I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate, but we still have property along Randall Road that can be built. I mean, we've got at least two that we know of, Chipotle and Starbucks, that are going in and out at McKee and Randall. So those are two smaller ones, and those will actually be connected to the rest of the town by a sidewalk, borrowing Pedersen's little piece of property, but there is actually a sidewalk along McKee Street that gets to that.
Mm-hmm.
So slowly but surely. So are we okay with moving that? Anybody online have any problems with that? We'll just exclude the industrial, but just apply this to everything. And if in two years we got to come back and change and talk about it, or whatever, we'll do it. Okay? So you want to make that change and then?
This would need to go back to, then, to plan commission for public hearings.
Plan commission, to do the public hearings, okay? So put that change in there. I think everything else, number-wise, everybody's okay with the numbers that we had in for the downtown mixed-use, and a middle-of-the-road of what's out there in the world?
Seems reasonable.
The table at the very end, is that our table, or is that in reference to one of the ordinances copied above? There's a South Elgin, Oak Park, and then there was this table.
Oh, if you're referring, yeah, back.
Yeah.
So that was, I believe that is either South Elgin or that, I'm still checking, I had the note there.
Okay, sorry, that was my last question, I just answered it.
Is that go with South Elgin and then just continue down?
That was Montgomery, actually. So Montgomery, that was the example of what they do for the, where they've done a parking minimum and maximum for each use.
Oh, okay.
So where they, you know, I'm not sure where they've developed those numbers from, that'll probably be a follow-up conversation with them, but basically, they were tailoring it. tailoring it. So, um, some of the higher demand uses, like, I know, like cannabis dispensary was one where the maximum was much higher than other retail, for example. Um, so they, they were kind of tweaking it, I think, partially on possible demand of the use as well as kind of what I think they're, were trying to tailor their development standards to as well. So.
And I see your note there where it says Montgomery. Thank you. I just missed it.
Okay. Got direction from us?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. 11. Discussion on Illinois Energy Legislation. I did not see the email until after lunch, so it was already in session, what, at 10:30 this morning?
It should be pretty quick.
Yeah.
Really, we knew, we knew Senate and House were going to meet this week, so we wanted to have this item on the agenda just to give you guys an update. Um, today, the Senate held their meeting. Um, actually didn't start for almost two hours after it was supposed to start. Chairman Hastings came out and said that there were basically two hurdles left to get over. One having to do with prevailing wage issues for renewable contractors, and the other having to do with decarbonization, uh, how to get there and timelines for getting there. Um, he indicated that, um, on the decarbonization, decarbonization front, that basically talks had stalled. Um, then they went to the CEO from Vistra Energy, and he made like a half an hour presentation. And then Chairman Hastings recessed the, the meeting and said that they'd be back in two hours, roughly, uh, later on. So late this afternoon, President Harmon basically came out and adjourned the legislative session for the Senate. So they adjourned without passing any legislation related to energy. And tomorrow the House meets. It's not anticipated that the House will take up energy tomorrow. What this basically means is that energy probably will likely wait now to come back in the veto session in the fall. That's the most likely scenario.
So a couple of months of deep breaths.
Probably. And that's basically it. There's nothing more, much more to update on today's, today's meetings.
One thing that I would say about, um, the process, you know, we had a lot of great discussion here at committee of the whole, including, um, those from the environmental groups as well that helped to, us to formulate the position statements that we then utilize to contact our individual legislators, um, to seek their support for, um, the most concerning things for us in this legislation. What I learned in that process was, um, there are so many people contacting the legislators, um, during that, that process, that I got the sense that our voice was a bit drowned out. Um, and so as we look to the future and inability to really present our issues and be at the table with our issues, we may want to explore the option of having a representative who is actually in the room when all of these hearings and, and discussions are being had. So, because I did hear from a number of, um, participants in the process that why all of a sudden are we hearing about, um, the concerns of the municipal electric utilities? And it was frustrating because from our side of it and from the IMUA's side of it, um, they had made many attempts to make these concerns known for the last two years, since, um, really since FEJA was, uh, passed. And so, um, that will be something as we move into the future and decide, you know, what exactly we would propose in that regard, bring to you for consideration, whether that is in the form of, uh, some type of lobbyist or, or some other way. We'll look at the possibilities and bring that forward to you.
Okay. Would that be something that we would try to do with NIPA or to try to?
Probably both, frankly.
All, all options?
Both, yeah.
To try to get everything. Because I know, having a meeting last week with, uh, representatives from Geneva and St. Charles, they both talked about, you know, where they're at with it and, you know, the effects on them, and also through somebody else was what Naperville is talking about.
Right.
You know, I mean, the, the effects that are out there are felt all different levels from the different municipalities, but everybody wants to be involved in it now. You know, and, and realizing that we think we've been talking about it a lot, but when you hear back from the state, you're not hearing that, you know, they feel that we were saying something before.
Right.
You know, that it's just not, there's this disconnect that's there.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of our focus in the next couple of months needs to be, um, on dispelling a lot of false information that was put out there. I think that needs to be a big part of our focus. We are a government, we're supposed to be accountable, we're supposed to be transparent, and we better stand by the truth. And so I think we can do that over the next couple of months because there were a lot of things put out there that, that weren't truths, which that's probably part of dirty politics that happens in every state.
In addition to that though, if I can chime in, what, what, what percentage of our electricity does Suncast use up?
70%.
Right.
14.
It, it varies. I get it. Um, and the estimate, if we don't, um, you know, if legislation went through the increase to our ratepayers is right around the same amount. Um, and I just bring that up because we're, we're in a pickle no matter which way we turn. So we got to continue the conversation and plan for the worst, whichever, uh, they may be.
Quite well taken.
Anybody else have any comments? Thanks for the update. I guess it's the good news that we have a little delay.
Yeah.
Trying to formulate more.
We can make more payments towards our debt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not that simple.
I know.
Okay, moving on then to item number 12, project status. Laura?
Yes, um, Justin Howe, who is retiring as a member of our Batavia Police Department after 21 years, has joined the Community and Economic Development Department as our new code enforcement building inspector, replacing Rhonda Klez, who, uh, retired after many years with the city. Um, and it just sort of was a nice, perfect fit. One of the things that we so appreciated in Rhonda was that, um, uh, her firmness when that was what was called for, but, uh, her incredible compassion. And I believe that, uh, Justin, uh, who spent many years as the Student Resource Officer out at Batavia High School exhibits both of these qualities, and I think he'll be very successful in this, uh, new role with the city. Uh, notices regarding annexation of property have been sent to property owners in the Orion-Thoria Washington area. We're proposing annexing the remaining nine properties that are surrounded by city limits, and most are on, uh, at least one city utility. Among other projects, um, there, there are so many projects under review in, uh, Community and Economic Development right now. Uh, staff is reviewing new modifications to the Target store on Randall Road, a new speculative industrial building on Louis Bork Drive, the second phase of the Avenue Chevrolet site redevelopment, which includes a Starbucks and Chipotle restaurant, a new church on the old Montessori school site at 595 South River Street, a new dental office building in the 1,000 block of West Wilson Street, and a conversion of the mobile station at Main and Randall into a Casey's gas station and convenience store. Uh, most of these will require some level of zoning approval, either design review or full zoning entitlements. Um, and the ones with the full zoning entitlements will also go to the city council for approval. But there's a tremendous amount of development activity that's going on in the city right now. Um, right now, we are in the midst of, um, Employee Appreciation Week, and it was, um, my honor to present you with, um, the same challenge coin, um, that was presented to all of our city employees. Um, I thought it was very important that not only do we take the time to appreciate, um, the hard work, uh, the sacrifices that were made by so many of our staff during the global pandemic crisis, um, but also just to have some memento to remember that they served the city, um, during this time. And so, um, we had that coin created, um, and, and we gave that to all of the employees at a barbecue that we held on site on, uh, on Monday. It was beautiful weather. And throughout this week, our wonderful Human Resources Department is finding other great ways to recognize employees for their accomplishments. Um, Information Systems has, uh, hired a Water Division GIS intern. Uh, the purpose for this intern is, um, to, uh, do GPS on over 10,000 B-Box locations and other water structures that exist in the city so that we can make sure that we get those into our GIS. And then finally, I'd just like to, um, uh, let all of you know that even the Batavia Fire Department was called for mutual aid for the large chemical fire that was in Rockton. Actually, our ladder truck was, uh, sent down there with personnel in order to, uh, do the regular manning of their fire stations while their personnel and equipment were, um, applied to, um, addressing the, the fire that's, that is happening there still. Um, Illinois is recognized across the United States as a leader in this type of mutual aid and are often called when there are, uh, natural disasters and other types of disaster situations, both for the public safety personnel, but also for, uh, public works. And Gary serves IPW man and is frequently, uh, called to provide support to fellow communities in, in the state of Illinois when they're hit with things like, uh, tornadoes or other significant events where additional public works, not only equipment might be needed or personnel, but also in, uh, leadership positions as well. And the City of Batavia very proudly, um, serves in that role for other communities. And we know that if it were Batavia that needed the same, that we're in a very strong network of mutual aid in this state. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
I have, I just a comment, because I don't know if I've ever gotten a chance to say it, but Rhonda, when, when we were elected, Rhonda offered to take us on a ride along. And I took her up on that. And if anybody, like newly elected, or if you've never had a ride along with a code enforcement officer, if any of your staff would ever offer that again, that was one of the most eye-opening experiences to learn how, um, your department works. And I got to know the city that I've spent 30 something years in so much better. So it was, um, it was a really great experience, and I'm really grateful to Rhonda. And so if anybody else wanted to take that up, that would be, it's a great, it's a great learning, learning tool. No, okay, as you should. It was worth it.
Yes, I know. Illuminating.
Is our ladder truck still up there or has it returned?
It, it came back. Did it spend 12 hours? Yeah, it's, when they're called like that, they are, uh, expected to spend 12 hours.
Yeah, a friend of mine sent me a picture of Batavia, Geneva, North Aurora and Aurora, all lined up in the front row of Rockton Station.
Wow, fun.
All, all four of us up there together.
Have a question. Saw a newspaper article about rising cost of building materials.
Yes.
And I was wondering if there was any formal communication from Shodding to the city regarding one Washington?
No, we, you know, we contact each other every couple of weeks to see what the status is. Um, uh, you know, with the next thing that we're expecting is the, uh, building permit application. But the stumbling block there, and I've shared with all of you, is that trying to get the additional financing in place because of the escalating cost of the building materials, they are seeking additional private financing, um, for the project. And as last week when we talked, um, that was still not set in place.
Okay, any others? Do you have anything? Anybody online? Okay, if not, uh, we have an executive session listed for purchase and sale of electricity, purchase of real estate, and potential litigation. Great big third meeting tonight.
You need a motion to go into that?
Yes, we need a motion for executive session.
A move that we go into executive session?
Second.
Miller.
Miller, second by na. Uh, roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Masado is absent. Beck?
She said aye.
She said aye. Ba?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Will?
No.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
See you in your third meeting.
Okay, and there will probably be nothing.